Okay, we're ready to open the hearing for
Thank you.
Ten Cherry Brook. We would like to try and fit the hearing in to a half hour timeframe. If you could make your presentation in, say, fifteen to twenty minutes, that would give us time for planning board comments and our consultants' comments. And Jay's been around the block a couple of times for this routine, so he might have it done by then. I am Al Ableman, the chairman of the planning board, and the other board members are
Louis Chalobasch.
Steve Altman.
Steve Caparros.
And this invisible man is David Nicholson.
Thank you.
All right, please get started.
So I'll go quickly through the neighborhood locust map for the RGFA. So what we have is, we're at ten Cherry Brook. We have fifteen residential butters, basically comprised of Miriam Street and Cherry Brook. The average RGFA of the residential butters is just over forty-one hundred square feet. Basically, it has a variance of about twenty-five hundred square feet to about almost eight thousand. So there's a large variance between the different houses. The average RGFA in a lot area, because that's kind of what we're going to compare this for, with those fifteen butters, is six percent, and their average lot size is about two point four. For our project site, the former state house that used to be on the site about eleven years ago was ten thousand square feet, just over ten thousand square feet. It was a seven bedroom, four car garage, and that, basically, our lot area is seven point three acres. So it ended up being about a three percent RGFA in a lot area. What we're proposing is just over twelve thousand four hundred, twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, which puts us at four percent RGFA in a lot area.
What did you say the average percent was?
The average was six percent. So quickly going through the existing conditions from the sidewalk. So this is the old existing conditions with the former state house on it. And so this was the house that would just be just over ten thousand square feet.
That ten thousand square feet did not include garage areas.
Oh. You said it was a four car garage?
Four car garage for the former asset, yeah. So the, and so the lot itself, as I mentioned, is seven point three acres. The existing house, so we had done the original work prior to it coming down for the former owners. The ridge height for the existing house, or the former existing house, was two seventeen point five for the elevations that we're working on now. And first floor was one eighty, two point six. So those are the two elevations I want to keep in your head for when we start looking at the proposed stuff. So since then, that house was taken down. So now this is kind of what the site looks like now. Basically, the remaining walls that were left over for the terrace areas. Just to kind of go through the conservation commission land in the back, we have, we're actually flanked in the rear by Cherry Brook. So Cherry Brook's meaner high water is this blue line. Then we actually have a BBW, a boarding vegetina wellin, which is shown as this green line. So red line is a twenty-five foot no disturb. The two purples are hundred foot repairing, two hundred foot repairing, so that's for the riverfront. And then we have this, the red and yellow, which is the hundred foot buffer zone for that BBW. So about a third of the lot is actually inside the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. I was in front of them last night and got the approval for the proposed work that we have down in that lower meadow area last night. So I'm going to show you two site plans tonight. The first is the one that you saw on the sidewalk, and we've actually made modifications based on comments. So this is what we're proposing. Basically, the house is situated generally in the former location for the existing, the former existing house, with the exception, of course, that we're pushing to the left further than that one was. The idea is to basically remove the existing driveway that wraps around the project site, keep the same curb cut that comes off Cherry Brook Road, run up the center of the lot, have a approach coming up through the drive court area, and actually put the actual parking court in the rear of the, of the house, so no one can see it from Cherry Brook. The septic system we're proposing is appropriate septic system to try to limit any kind of disturbances from it. It's in the general ballpark of where the existing septic system is. We propose to keep the existing tennis court, but we're just going to re-circumvent it. We have, behind the house, we have two terrace areas. One terrace area comes off the first floor, one terrace area comes off the basement area. So we have a set of stairs that connect the two proposed pool areas through there. To handle the increase in impervious area, we have recharge basin scattered throughout the area, capturing predominantly the roof runoff, some of its capture and some of the actual driveway runoff. We're showing basically anywhere from ten to twenty percent decreases in peak grader runoff and volume runoff to all our design points, which are four Cherry Brook, Cherry Brook Road, thirty Cherry Brook, forty Cherry Brook, and then Cherry Brook itself. So we have, we're actually decreasing the runoff, so it's actually a veteran for the environment for that. So during the sidewalk, as we were going through all this walking through the site, there was three things that were sounded in our, basically, comments you were bringing up. One was tree removal. One was the driveway, how it actually laid out, which in turn also affected the tree removal. And the other one was the grading and a volume of grade over on that side of the property. So what we did is this. So we listened, and instead of taking down half the grove of trees down there, we're saving them all. We realigned the driveway turn. We took the one that we were talking about that we could easily transplant, so we're going to transplant that tree. We now only have one retaining wall on this edge, so we don't have those grid slopes through there. What we did on this side was actually, we used to have the walk from the basement up to the, basically, up to the front yard. So we were going from one sixty-three up to one seventy-two. We had all those stairs, so that's how come that retaining wall was there. What we did is we took that retaining wall and we put it in our front yard. So we actually dropped this whole area by about seven feet. So now you don't have that big wall in between anymore. You only have this, basically, this, these walls are four and a half feet tall, and then we have the six foot grade coming up here, and then these two are two, three and a half foot walls. So we figured that'd soften that whole area up significantly. So we had saved the trees down here. We reworked this wall, so it didn't look as awkward. And then back here, what I did is reconfigured the recharge basin and saved four more trees up top. So there's twenty-seven total trees on our property in this grove, and we're removing three of them, all of them are which hanging towards the house. That's been, they are in the area where this retaining wall is, but even if we wanted it, even if we chose to save them, we still want to take them down because of the fact that they're leaning right towards the house. So we felt that three, removing three trees in an area of twenty-seven, we thought that was, that would be okay.
Could you put the other board, the prior board below, so that we can see them?
Yep. So, so what we ended up doing is now, we're basically removing seven less trees. We're still transplanting two trees. By removing this grade over here, we originally were a net fill of three hundred and ninety-five yards. We're actually down to two hundred and sixty yards. So we're actually bringing in less fill, a significant amount of less fill. The impervious area hasn't changed on site, so we're still, our recharge basin is still doing what they're, what they're functioning, what they're supposed to be doing. As I mentioned before, our heights are the same for the actual house itself, which, basically, where our ridge height is eleven feet lower than the former state house that was there. It's also about four and a half feet below the maximum level, so we're significantly below the maximum level. So I'll let Michael move for the plans. So this is the landscape line. So as you enter Cherry Brook from this direction, currently, you know, you have views coming up here to the proposed house. There's an existing grove of evergreens here. The goal is to extend this evergreen row all the way down to really block any views you will have up to the home. As you continue down and pull into the driveway, this existing grove of trees is really going to help to, again, block any views really to the house, which is important for us to, you know, really pull the driveway away so we can keep those. We'll also have a line of two oak trees coming up the driveway as well, which, you know, the canopies from, you know, being down at this elevation, looking out, the canopies of these trees are really help to block the house as well. So now as you're coming up, we have a set of stairs coming down to the slower section. And then we also have a parking court, which we use more for guests. All lights within the parking court are going to be facing in, so there really won't be any lights seen from Cherry Brook up against the house. Now, as you pull through into the back driveway court, we will, you know, be saving these trees over here, you know, so when you come down into the back, there'll be a gate that will need for the pool that will bring you down onto the raised patio terrace. And then from this upper terrace, you walk through more of a formal garden area, down a set of stairs to the, to the pool patio. To the left side of the pool patio, we have a covered structure with a fireplace. This wall here will be pushed out. You can kind of see the existing wall here. So this wall will be pushed out. We're keeping that same overlook terrace idea that's there currently and just kind of shifting it down to make it more sense with the landscape. And also, you know, we're pushing this wall out here too, so that we can pull in and also have a little bit of a buffer between the wall and the pool. As you come down to this lawn area over here, we have almost a pathway through the meadow that extends out to that open lawn space here, and then a walkway that connects all the way back through onto the sides. Really, you'll have almost a corridor coming along the property. We'll also do a small seating area underneath this tree, which, you know, will just kind of mow the meadow grass down and have a nice bench there. There will be a focal point from, you know, looking from this patio down through into the meadow.
So exterior lighting, are you talking about the lighting?
Yes. So on the reverse attic, moving all the way.
So is that the new grading plan, I assume?
This here?
Yeah, as opposed to the one we saw?
Yes, this is, this is going along with the new, the new plan here. I have the old plan too, if you want to see it. So, okay.
Just before you turn it over, the sizes of the new plantings, like the evergreen screen along the road, what size evergreens?
Twelve to fourteen.
Twelve to fourteen. And the two trees, what are we talking about for those?
Those are three and a half to four inch caliber, so it'll be pretty good size when they go in.
What, fourteen to sixteen, something like that, or do you think?
Probably, yeah.
Taller than that, sixteen to eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, these are all the lighting. We also have some of the landscape features here, you know, the blue stone, the terracotta patio. But these lights here will actually be the lights on the house. They're all dark sky compliant. These steps here will be wherever there's, these are, will actually be built into the wall and shine down onto the steps. These, this here, the picture didn't come up, but this is actually under the cap lighting, so where the walls are, there'll be a two inch cap on top, and these are actually recessed underneath that, shine down on the wall, so it really won't be any light kind of casting onto the wall. And these are the path lights that will be, there's only, I believe, three or four of them in the front of the house, and the rest of them in the, in the back of the house. And then these are the LED pool lights that will be inside the pool. And total lumens, we have fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty. That's what we're on now.
Good. All right. Anything else in the presentation?
The architecture.
The architect. So I'm the, I'm the landowner, I'm the owner, and my wife and I are licensed architects, and so we've been working quite a bit with the builder to put this together. And we've really wanted to have, I mean, this house is really a replication of the size and floor plan that we have currently in Colorado that we're, we're selling as we move here. But the style that we have here is very much a New England style, but we've tried to ground it with a little bit of stone here, that's reflective of the stone that is all over the property. The site, it being seven point three acres, the house is well situated. If you've seen 3D that we have, when you look at it from, from the air, it's not an overscaled structure for the size lot that we have. And then by lowering the, as we have lowered it, by lowering the side a little bit to the top of that hill, which is the private location for the house, it tends to ground it organically a little bit more with the property.
You haven't seen the 3D?
Okay. There. I'm sorry, I thought you'd seen that. Yeah, so this is, these are the recreations with the vegetation. So this is from the driveway at Cherry Brook. This is as you're coming down Cherry Brook, our property on the left. And this is if you go by our house and you look back at it from the neighbor's house. this really is a representative of the 3D, the 3D sketches. So this is the overall, of course, this, this view doesn't catch the nature area to
So these are the ones we had shown at the sidewalks.
I was going to say, do these have the latest iteration?
Nope. We just finished out that.
Yeah, this still has the, these little walls, as we, we haven't changed them yet.
So that's, that's really it. Lighting fixtures, maybe we could talk a little bit about where they are on the building elevations, and if you could point them out to us.
Those dark fixtures you've mentioned are right there. One on either side or either side of the main entrance.
Yeah, none of the garage doors. So we, we have lights along the garage doors, and then by code, at the entry doors in the back of the house. Really, the front of the house just has the two of them. And they are dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
And that's included in the lumens that Mike mentioned.
Okay. The exterior doors, I know, how many are there on the rear of the, of the house?
There's, you have a door up here.
Yeah.
You have an exterior door here.
Right.
And an exterior door here, here, and on the great room on each side.
All right, so that's, that's what, seven?
Six.
Six fixtures. One per door?
Yes.
Okay. Wall mounted?
Wall mounted, yes.
Okay. No ceiling mounted?
No.
No. And the garage fixtures are wall mounted as well?
Same thing, wall mounted, yes.
And how many?
There's five.
There were originally more.
There was originally more, yeah, we cut those back per your recommendations and...
Where are they, where are the lights located, in which stone walls? The downlights in the stone walls?
Is it easy if I bring the plans over or put it up to be able to see them?
Yeah.
It's upended on top of that though, there's the microphone.
So, with the lighting, as you pull in, there's two electric lights on the side here as you pull up.
And the entry lights are?
Ah, the down, the downlights. So they'll be on the cap.
On a post, on a baller, on what?
Ah, these aren't pillars.
Okay, how tall?
Like granite?
They're four feet.
Okay.
Granite?
They'll be the same stone on site.
All right.
They'd add two inch blue stone cap, and the light would actually be underneath the cap shining down. And then here, the same thing would be, all these lights here are actually the same under the cap downlighting. And then you can see the lights here and here for the exterior, some more here. These are the path lights, just walking into the home. And then these deal with the path lights. And there's a couple of lights on each side as you pull in.
Oh, some there.
No lights, down light there on the end?
There's no, there's no lights on this wall here, exactly. And like I said before, all these lights here are on the interior of that courtyard, so really, from here you can see them. Then there's two step lights that will be mounted inside the wall itself, cast down on the steps here, and then also down here.
And no lights in the past, or do you know that?
Yep.
Which of the lights that are on the proposed, in your schedule?
This one, they are the...
You've got samples on the list.
Yeah, I'll show you one. It's actually kind of tough to see, so we'll print out.
What chapter is that?
There, these ones here, so they actually recess. You can imagine if they're, you know, the cap on that.
So these are, these are wall lights, like these are wall lights?
Well, these, these are more for steps, so these cast more of a narrow light down.
It's not, it's not a light like that one, or on top of the road, or?
No.
So I was just wondering where they were on this schedule?
They are the, the wall sponges are the ones on the houses. Step lights are the ones that are here and here, and then on the back. The path lights assemble here, which, you know, these, and then there's some in the back, and then the pool lights. The wall downlights right here, so those are the little lights here.
And you use those in twenty-six places?
Mm-hmm.
All around there?
Yeah, and then there's also some in the back here too, which will kind of cast down on the pillars, down onto the, onto the steps as well.
One question I have, just more, not, not, this is a question on lighting, but it has to do with the amazing work that the next door neighbor did. And I'm noticing another here that says...
Right there.
Well, that, well, just a second. Says, "Plantings do be done by neighbor as discusses." I, I think that means that, that somebody talked to the neighbor and, and he agreed to do something. But, but his plantings actually come onto your property. And this shows it nicely, neatly stopped.
Yeah, he, he went over a little bit.
So this is, what's happening here? Because he's in this area now, actually.
So these are, are all new plantings. So this slope, it really starts to slope down, it's probably about here.
Yeah.
So all these, all these plantings are going to be, you know, so that really, when you look through this wood, wood in here, you won't be able to see it.
And we talked about planting? No, but we talked about planting some...
The slope.
Some creepers on the slope to...
Right now, it's vault, it's just bare. It's just bare, bare earth.
It's got a road.
If this is steeply sloped here, how can you plant these trees there?
Yeah. I don't understand how that works. It looks like it's all nice and blended, but there's this big honking slope that's coming down.
Then there's also the, the significant amount of dirt, roots of those big, did you talk about that?
Yeah, we're going to get him to fix that.
We, we had actually thought about having him mellow this slope out a little bit, so that these trees could be planted here and then come up the slope. Right now, obviously, it's impossible to do that. But if he finishes out what he should be doing there, he has to mellow out this hill a little bit, and then we can plant the trees coming up there.
There's a lot of "he should."
Yeah, I know. We need to know what, 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 what it should be done.
And this was all done in the last two weeks, so. He did this in the last two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, he's been busy, obviously. Really quick.
The way this, the way this went, I had a dialogue with him about what the hell are you doing over here, basically, because he had all, every tree on the property was taken down. And I said, "This is really an eyesore, and it creates a, a view from the road," and when I really don't have a view from the road anywhere else. He said, "Look, you know, I know that I'll put, I'm going to plant some evergreens there, you know, I'm going to create a shield." And I said, "Well, I think the town's going to require you to do that anyway if I don't require you to do that." And so he did it.
Well, we actually have a...
Well, what we're going to need here is something more than...
Something that, yeah.
On a detail level, that shows how that gets fixed.
How, when we do our earthwork, how we fix that.
Yeah, right.
Well, how they're going to blend together, because right now, you've got this big angle of...
I frankly would like to take the responsibility for our site work to fix this. I don't want him on my property. I don't, I don't trust that he's...
Has been going well.
I don't, pardon me?
Has been going well, so.
I don't trust, you know, I don't know, I don't think if I told him to do it one way, it'll get done that way. So I'd rather us take the responsibility for, for resolving this area here.
We have a good amount of space here too, to kind of take this, you know, steep green, kind of make it a little bit more gentle.
Yeah, because there are driveways coming out there. We're taking out the driveway.
So you're going to provide a detail in that area?
Yeah, we need a detail, this needs to be detailed right in there. And then there's a line of, of white pines right in there. Is that, are these the existing white pines, the only ones that are still standing, or?
Jay?
Are those the ones that are coming down?
There's a, there's a, three trees on those twenty-seven that are up there. So it's actually, we, we have them all located on here. So that's, that's all the trees up there that we have, that are on our property.
Yeah.
This is actually the old design, so it's not... So we're saving those, except for three of them.
Did he cut down a lot of them?
No, he actually didn't, not up here.
No.
He took down some down here.
And a lot?
It was all down there.
Yeah.
So I think, I think a couple of these trees that we located, I think, are going down.
So which trees are coming down of the white pines?
Up here, these, these three right here. So they're all, it's a sixteen, a twenty, and a twenty-two, and they're all leaning towards the house in this direction. So these, these are all nice trees.
Right here, here, and here?
These three, right, those three, yeah.
So you've got two layers of wall.
Yeah.
So are you going to be able to save the rest of the trees?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. There's no grating going on around these trees at all. Yep, yep. These are two, these are two cut walls, so all the grids in the back side of those.
Yeah. Where was the tree with the conduit?
That's, these over here, that's that forty inch one.
Yep.
And these are the three that actually look like trees, but they're actually the branches that are coming out of the ground.
Right. And something like six or seven.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah. Never seen that, that they're, they're forty feet tall and they're actually branches.
And the lights for the tennis court?
No, nope.
This is, that's going to be an interesting walk.
Are you planning a generator?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We didn't walk through it.
We'll have a generator, won't we?
Yeah, I think we have a generator. We do, so we have a generator here, and then an irrigation wall.
Okay, so you know about the sound transmission?
Well, I have a question about the generators. Is there a way to tuck it further toward that wall?
Towards the side?
Yeah. The butters who were on this end came and visited, and that was their biggest concern. They, generally, they thought everybody was doing the right thing, except they were concerned about the generator.
The sound of a generator?
Yeah. So...
We can probably get over towards the wall, right?
Yeah. I mean, the wall itself is about a, about a hundred and fifty feet away from the property line, but right now, the generator is about a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
I was just thinking that that wall might be a sound...
That's the one thing we always stop on when we put a generator, because the wall might be just that, go right off of us.
Oh.
Right. You need to soften.
We can maybe bring it, we can maybe bring it down and hide it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Instead of without bringing it all the way over.
Yeah. As long as it meets the sound criteria on the property line.
Yep, so we have, it's the, we have the, it's the Generac Quiet Series.
Yeah.
And then it's going to have the sound enclosure.
Okay. All right. Kim, any other comments on landscaping?
No, they've, they've addressed them all in previous meetings.
Yeah, but you must be concerned about that.
I haven't, the last time I went out there, that hadn't happened.
She has to see that.
And I don't think Dave has either.
Yeah, it was a different sort of disaster when we were out there. So this sounds like a new...
A new disaster.
A new twist. But we want to get it resolved, because it's right up the street.
Yeah.
So we just need to somehow get a design that works for you guys. That sound reasonable?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. In that case, what should we do? Why don't we, why don't we ask for the detailed revised landscape drawing? We'll take a look at that the same night that we review the draft decision.
So you want that the third or the seventeenth?
Then, then maybe all the disasters in that area will be finally resolved, or if they aren't already.
Okay. So you're going to get us a landscape plan within the next two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I mean, what are you, what are you exactly looking for here? Do you want...
A lot more detail on that.
Okay, just like a two dimensional planting plan?
Yeah, with the grates.
Yeah, we'll, we'll topo that, will still be put in?
Yeah, topo the whole thing, show us what is really going to go there. Ground cover and, and major plantings.
Could we possibly do the third?
Um...
Good.
Ten are, I'm not here on the...
Appreciate it. She's better at reviewing.
She's reviewing. I can review it.
Thanksgiving's actually here.
The third, that doesn't really give us any time. It gives you a few, couple of days, and then you've got to get it to...
I can review it over Thanksgiving.
The third is for two weeks or two days.
Yeah, I could, I could get a plan.
We'll get it into you very quickly.
Tomorrow?
Somebody has this topo now?
Yeah, but they want to do the grading, so he's going to have a topo, regrade it.
I think it's two...
We do the seventeenth, it's just, because we need to get the decision written out too. I guarantee you, this isn't topo'd out.
Oh, no, it isn't. It isn't, that just happened, yeah.
So you're going to invent the topography down at Park Lawn, or are you going to wait for him to do it?
Today's the nineteenth. A good chunk of next week has kind of disappeared with the holiday. And then the third, I mean...
The following week.
It's the following week.
It's two weeks from today.
Yeah, it's...
I mean, it's tight, but I think...
And town meeting is the first.
Right, that's right. Right, uh, that's right. But we're ready for town meeting, aren't we?
That's because you don't have to stand up.
I'll stand up there and explain it.
It's a short term.
They gotta write the decision.
If, if, we'll, we'll work very hard to get this to you right away, if there was a possibility of getting the third. Just to be.
I'm willing.
What are you planning to start construction?
Well, I'm trying to.
I mean, I'm pretty caught up.
I'm trying to go as soon as I can, just cause. Somebody has to go up there.
I'm out of a house.
I know, but these guys are gonna.
He's living in the apartment right now, so. So you're preparing to, to be with winter condition? We are, we're anxious to go as quickly as possible.
Right. So, so you're gonna have to get me that new plan by the beginning of next week. Is that doable? And then Kim's gonna spend her turkey dinner looking at it.
These guys are miracle workers.
We'll get it.
And you're gonna have time to write it?
And you're gonna write it, and?
Yeah.
No, we'll, we'll get it.
I'm, I'm pretty caught up on, on decisions at this point.
It just, once again, he.
I've got a lot of stuff out there that hasn't come in, and it's crazy.
Okay, we'll do it. We'll continue to do the third.
And are we gonna go?
Okay, so this'll be.
Are we gonna go too late on the third?
We'll be right to do this. We share your concerns.
No, no. I have been, I have my marching orders. It's not gonna be anything after nine-thirty for hearings. So right now, we have an exploratory discussion, and we have the eight forty, eight forty-five Boston Post Road at eight o'clock. And this would be like eight fifteen or eight thirty.
Yeah. This better be right.
I'll bring coffee.
No, we don't want coffee.
No, we're coffeeing.
I'll bring you.
I'm drinking. That'll be right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So your, your motion to continue to the third at eight thirty?
Yeah. Eight, eight or, I thought we said.
All right, eight o'clock.
Uh, wait a minute, eight forty-five is Boston Post Road one, right? So this would be.
No, it's eight o'clock.
Okay.
Motion?
So move.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye. Thank you all for your watch. Thank you.
Thank you.